That's kind of the discussion Selena and I had.
Yeah.
Around it, but we're happy to fill it.
The only thing I have is if you get too many words in there, it starts. Sure you want this on?
No, it's mine instead when we turn back on.
It's here we go.
Oh, we've got that over there.
If you get too many words in there, you're starting to muddy it. I'm sorry that my voice is so loud.
What a down chat.
I know. But is that joke that the neighbor yells at their kids so loud that even I went to bed? Fresh my game.
We're good now.
But I understand Jennifer's point and but I think we developed this priority originally for the business community. And if we start adding too many words or changing it and stuff, we're going to get away from that. And I think like what Beth said, maybe putting that point into a different priority about the homes and the residents. And that community might be a better fit. And that's my opinion.
Can we look through the other ones again just to refresh since we?
Yeah, I was just going to, when we put together our gap analysis, the future state that council shared was more diverse economy, higher skilled and paid jobs. Live and work in Covington, get Lake Point open and bustling, downtown that continues to thrive, continued financial stability, more small businesses. Specialty businesses, increased support for small businesses, something open at Lake Point. And these are not organized, just all your thoughts that we got, right? New restaurants, new parks, spend weekends or days out in the city. Plan in place for a rec center and plan for overlay road. So that's what we developed that objective statement for those suggestions. Yeah, we don't need to finalize this now, so.
Isn't it helpful to get a refresher kind of where you had in your spot analysis as well?
Yeah.
We have them here. Yeah.
She was fast and she really fast.
Let's go to priority two.
Well, yeah, we'll go to two. So socially vibrant destination and what the proposal Selena I put together is elevate Covington as a destination community to live, work, shop and recreate. Through strong neighborhoods, enhanced natural spaces and quality of life. Sorry, all the events.
What, what does that mean?
Well, part of the comments, part where we drew that from was we want to have strong neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are active, engaged, that are maintained, taken care of. That's the word we used to describe.
But I like that, actively almost is more, it's more movement action. I know the poor being subjective now, but you can go off somehow stronger than like I envisioned like the mission.
That's funny, actually. We used engaged in one of the other ones, but an engaged city council.
Yeah, there was something.
Quality doesn't sound fun.
I don't like that.
Memorable events.
No, just the word inclusive by itself. We need something else with it.
Quality, quality inclusive is what.
Right. I'm thinking holiday inclusive events, but I don't love the word quality.
Right there, but I don't know that I feel like. I just don't think quality. Upward even.
Attractive.
So and exciting, inclusive.
Sound like a better one. You have an adjective. You can always make it exciting and that's a pro is better.
Didn't we land on kind of just kind of.
That's true.
Do you want engaged neighborhood?
Engaged or active, I don't.
Yeah, I think we're very active. It's either one.
If you have it elsewhere, then yeah, there's a change like there that the other one.
So elevate Covington as a destination community to live, just listen as I say it so that you're as you're out in the community. So elevate Covington as a destination community to live, work, shop and recreate through active neighborhoods. Enhanced natural spaces and exciting and inclusive events. You like that word and in there or would you rather have it exciting, inclusive events?
I don't, I don't like the word exciting. I like the concept of it. I just.
It just doesn't flow. It doesn't flow. Whereas.
Enticing.
Elevation, so listen. Listen to it this way then, elevate Covington as a destination community to live, work, shop and recreate through engage. Neighborhoods, enhance natural spaces and equality inclusive events. Quality inclusive just doesn't flow. So I think we need to have somebody just wordsmith something similar to exciting quality. I like the word active neighborhoods better than engaged.
So vibrant is a good word, but we didn't use it because it's actually no priority.
Why not? Why not reuse it?
Yeah.
Why not reuse vibrant again?
Yeah.
Because it flows well and it just. Re-institutes, enhances your statement of above. No, you can use vibrant inclusive events. So elevate.
I don't think so.
No.
Would there be a comma? Would it be vibrant?
Yeah.
Vibrant. It doesn't seem to flow.
So we tinkered around with word inclusive on several. And I think what we boiled down to is, and that was one of the ones where it just was really hard to fit it into a well-sanded sentence. And the assumption was is that we are going to be doing that, whether we say inclusive in it or not. But if it's important to the council, we'll find a way to put it in. Yeah, yeah.
And if I need to add to to what you mentioned, like you completed kind of earlier, you know, we could wordsmith a piece of things, but your vision has that. Yeah, right. It really is at the top of where you're going with this, right? And so I think just rather than you're saying we're doing this for all. And I think we were trying to narrow that focus down just a little bit with all of those assumptions with our vision, mission and values.
And that's what I meant by the assumptions. Because it's in our vision, it's assumed that our objectives and action items are meeting that vision, which is. It says exceptional services for all.
I think, I guess the one thing would be if everything was being introduced to the packet and some of these in the vision and all of that, then it probably makes sense, but. I could see as we're out and about, some of these things getting processed off and, you know, being looked at separately, even though.
You don't know what it is, but.
So that might be just something to think about as we do the final.
It's wording on.
Well, and as the various teams are working on them, will they constantly be referencing the mission or will they be looking at the project?
But the thing is, it doesn't disclude anybody.
But I think you have to be functional with inclusive now. It could be either have that pause. Oh yeah, those other people instead of just assuming not everybody.
That's the best place to put the word inclusive and maybe we just take out the inclusive events. Sounds wrong to.
I like vibrant events.
Yeah.
Vibrant cultural events.
Vibrant events for all.
Yeah. All different, all different meanings, but yeah. We, I laughed at it. We. And laughed about for all at the end of everything.
Do we have for all on any of the other things right now?
No, we took it off.
Then why don't we remove the word inclusive and put vibrant events for all?
We're seeing that now, yeah.
So elevate Covington as a destination community to live, work, shop and recreate through active neighborhoods, enhanced. Natural spaces and vibrant events for all.
That's, that's beautiful.
Yeah. I'll use it during the birthday party.
Is that, is this a council's like, yeah, yeah, until next time we talk about it.
Active, maybe it could be great, but some might think that we're being physically active, not engaged, the academic community, which is why I like more engaged. And I might be able to wordsmith being engaged. Active, maybe it can be greater, but somebody might think that we're being physically active, not engaged, we're acting in community, which is why I like word engaged and I might be able to wordsmith being engaged.
I think it is a better, I think engaged is a better word.
Okay, let's do that. Through engaged neighborhoods, enhanced natural spaces and vibrant events for all, it rolls, for me it rolls.
I think it sounds really good.
Like if I was standing up in front of people and reading and giving a speech, it just flows so much easier.
Not that you would stick to script.
No. I didn't stick to script earlier or anything, and it turned out much better.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we're good on that one?
Yeah.
Cool, we'll go to priority three. Yeah. Add it to before we get to. A commitment to health and safety, objective statement, grow Covington as a community where people are safe, live an active life, engage in the community and have access to city and social resources. Where all have access to city and social resources. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't sound bad.
And all have.
We talked about this word grow, how we kind of feel like we're past the grow, what were some of the other words that we were using, do you remember that conversation?
Yeah, well forged.
Yes, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, we liked it because we feel like we still are in the growing stage and that growing towards greatness is a never-ending pursuit, right? And so we like the imagery over forging where growing is the sprouting and.
A little more freedom, forging a little more.
Yeah.
I like that where you have the word all.
Any other comments on that one? This feels like too easy for this one.
Go to the next one real quick.
Okay, so exceptional city services. Provide Washington's best municipal services through a great city council, responsive staff and resources to meet the community's needs.
Is that what you wanted to, not just a good day?
That might have been, but it's.
It can be an active.
Yeah.
Or what about a, what about a responsive city council? And then for staff, like quality, I want to have the word in my head.
The best.
The awesomeness.
The awesomeness.
They're very well-known in the community, they're very talented, but more than that.
Intelligence go a little too far.
I like.
Come on.
Well, I'm out. Yeah, I, I, I think.
I would like.
Provide Washington's best municipal services through invisible and responsive and.
Responsive.
And I think the reason we did that is because staff has responded to hundreds of messages in their day, so that's an important part for staff and we thought engaged for.
So then.
So we thought engaged for council because that encompasses everything that you do.
Want to engage.
Yes. No, visible and engaged.
Yeah.
But engaged also means visible, so.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, what up, this is really about the moment we were giving slot analysis, how can, how can people be more approached? You know, how a company approaches you, you know, they're not just going to.
We could, but approachable.
An approachable city council, but that's, that's almost the same thing as visible, stupid, is effective to likely staff? No.
I like responsive.
I think this looks good. That's what, that's what I get.
So do we put the invisible and engaged city council?
Sure. Well, right now, you know.
Indivisible would be cool.
Indivisible.
I'm sorry.
Indivisible.
Okay.
Okay.
Should we roll back to one then?
Yeah. So promote Covington's business friendly environment and go economically diverse, resilient and sustainable.
For me, and I still like it the way that.
I would still like for all.
Want to add for all?
So we're not, we're commenting, the community needs.
Community oriented for all.
Diverse and we're talking about. Our environment, our environment is economically, economically diverse, resilient, sustainable. And so because we've got diverse media, that, yeah, that should say that this is for everyone. It's not just the. It benefits everyone, so that's why, I think you intended this to be the business.
Yeah.
Diversity of the businesses, I think the fact that word is in there also means that it benefits everyone.
I mean, that's, that's the goal.
Well. What would you change to feed the economic? Or something.
Does that get further away from what we're?
No, I think, I think it can point it further that it's specifically about how we're growing.
So and sustainable economic base?
Stand about sustainable economy, so where, what do you want?
We already got an economically diverse, you've got business friendly environment.
Oh, yeah, it's.
So I would, I would, I'd still stay with community.
I mean, the second one, you can take out, promote Covington's business friendly environment, grow a diverse, resilient, sustainable economic base.
It doesn't community kind of feed a little bit more into the conversation we're having.
Yeah.
I would prefer to keep.
Yeah, I would keep the first one.
And then?
I like it as, that's only one of six.
Because if you put economic base at the end, we've got to take economically out and.
Yeah.
It just throws it off.
What if it read promote Covington's business friendly environment and grow a diverse, resilient and sustainable economic?
That might be the thing.
That focuses then on the, the businesses, it's the economic community versus the.
Right.
So the original part of objective statement, one, this goal that we're putting together was centered around building that economic base to support a sustainable community. Right, that, that was around our conversation. But I like yours, Joe, but I think it takes away that. Community aspect of it and says all of them, the economic aspect.
I still like.
Which isn't, you know, either way, the council wants to go, it's fine.
I still like the first one because it just, promote the businesses to grow our entire community. That's the way I see it. It's not talking about a community of businesses, it's talking about a sustainable community, diverse, resilient and sustainable.
But that's not clear, that's why everyone's going into this economic.
I mean. I guess I'm thinking about like what Jennifer said, when you have like one priority is really, in the end, all of it's going to go to the community as a whole. Nail this thing, part of it is the economy and part of it is engaging the neighborhood and part of it is having events, like so each priority sort of. To me is a spoke in the hub of what we're doing with you, right? But it's so when you think of sustainable community, we certainly could do that, but then when I start thinking about it now, maybe it's, which is good. It's a sustainable community, it's the services that we can provide, it's because we have a tax base or we have. I, and then into. In an appropriate scenario, everybody would be able to sustain themselves, you know, because of the environment that we created. And for those that can't, then you can provide that, you can save them now, but that's a lot to. When I'm thinking community now, I'm thinking about all those things.
And remember the objective statement is feeding into that or feeding from that strategic priority, which is the blessings of the economy. Right, and so that's why our, our building that was about promoting our economy to support, which is how cities work, right? Economy supports the community, it's not the other way around, you know, as far as economically. What's up?
Sorry, I'm good with the vision, I'm moving into things, everything is a balance. If we were to really focus on business and. I'm going to do the second one down, I'm not saying I think we could, would have to, I mean, it's all about business and there's, there's nothing wrong with it. Because we have the different scopes of. Flavor for other things, but I'm, I'm okay with the person, in fact. I like, like, like you said, we're talking about growing. A diverse, resilient community.
And for me, now that we've gone through all of the others, I feel like we have residents covering in other ways that I'm good with.
I'm also good with the regional.
Fine with it.
We want more than five.
Well, no, I don't mean that, no, I mean, I get it, I mean, any one of them, so.
Well, I, I get that, I really do, like this is the council's strategic plan, right? The organization's going to work on in the next several years, so who wants to be really happy with it?
Okay, all right, I'm very happy with it.
I'm excited about it.
I mean, and I say that too because you talked about the other three, but again, all four of them together create what we're calling.
Right, well, like you said, the spokes of the wheel, right? And, and this is important enough that it doesn't need to be time sensitive, if we need to come back on this, we can, right? Whatever the council's comfortable.
But you need this as your guiding star to start developing your actionable goals.
Yeah.
So I think I'm nailing it earlier, it's better.
So would.
Whatever works for council will.
So would this come back to count, does this need to come back to council to approve it?
So at this point, what we want to do is get some consensus on our objective statements and then we'll go back and start working action items. That we bring back for another study session with council, then we'll put it all together and bring it back to council for approval, okay?
So here's kind of a slide example or.
Those were my very rough draft action items I threw out real quick, but I still think so.
Yeah, so the intent here obviously now is kind of taking that objective statement and then all of the books from that are, are priorities, vision. And then with departments, then how do we make that happen, what's the roots on the ground, the implementation actions to, you know, making a clear vision. And so these can just be very like, you know, to teach newness, right? And so this is just, gives you kind of an example of, of being that. And, and I, you know, if you want to wait, you know, something that I think also happens is, you know, if staff is working kind of off the draft objective statement, knowing that it could change. You might see stuff in our action items that kind of solidify what you think that. It worked, because that's how it should be, right?
Yeah, so if you want, we can, first one alone for now, we might think of some alternatives we can present and then. We'll create action items under need those and bring those back and we can discuss objective one and then the action items for the other, the rest of them.
Council good with that? Okay.
And that's better than mine.
So, so is count, do we have council consensus then to go, you show each one, you've got that one, we may evaluate that one. This one, we prefer the one that's highlighted in yellow. The same with priority three, we prefer the highlighted in yellow. And then priority four in yellow, so is council consensus good with this, staff can continue working forward to bring us back something with action? Okay, I see consensus.
Thanks, council.
Thank you, thanks for a great presentation, we're gonna ask for that, and my apologies again for starting late.